People are on, or virtually.
It's like four or five.
Yeah, I don't have those buttons on my.
Oh, yeah, we just got, it just said, uh, it's being live streamed, Lisa.
Yeah, I gotta.
Go to the wrong other spot, don't they?
Yeah.
So it's a live stream on?
Yep, I got notification that it started.
Right. All right.
We're good? All right. City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee for February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, this meeting is called to order at one oh four P M. Uh, we'll begin with roll call. Uh, I'm John Halen, he/him?
I'm Amanda Hamer.
She.
Erin Rivers, he.
Corey Sparks, she/her.
Ashley Schaper, she/her, there you go.
Carl Burnett, um, Vice Sheriff, uh, he/him.
Whitney Bennett, she/her.
Excellent. Um, we will begin with our land acknowledgement. Uh, Carl, are you ready for reading that?
Oh, sure. We would like to acknowledge that the beautiful land known as Bend, Oregon, north to the Columbia River is the original homelands of the Confederated Tribes of Worm Springs. The Confederated Tribes ceded this land in the Treaty of eighteen fifty-five while retaining regular and customary hunting, fishing, and gathering rights. The Wana Lama, Worm Springs, Wasco, Wasco, and Northern Paiute people inhabited this area in certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It is also important to note that the Klamath Trail ran north through this region to the great Salilo Falls trading grounds. This trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land. It is our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land.
Excellent. And we'll move on to, as John, we'll move on to the approval of the January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three draft meeting minutes. As read, are there any corrections that anyone would like to put forth? Okay, I motioned to approve the minutes as read without any corrections.
Second thought, a motion, this is Amanda.
All in favor? Excellent.
I think I said emotion.
Motion passes, but.
I think I said emotion.
All right, we have four minutes for public comment. Is there anyone here from the public online? We have no one in person.
No attendees.
All right, we saved four minutes. All right, agenda item number five, discuss and set actionable goals for the COBAC two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three strategic plan. We have forty-five minutes allocated for this. As a group, we want to determine interest in subgroup assignments, um, to see if people are more interested in certain aspects of our strategic plan than others. For instance, you might be really interested in improving transportation and infrastructure, but not in creating an accessible committee or community. Or maybe you just have a passion for one of the others. Um, I, I, I'm guessing probably we're gonna have a lot of overlap, but, um, let's talk about improving transportation and infrastructure. Is there anyone that would like to be specifically interested in that subcommittee?
John, John, if I may, uh, this is Cassandra Kehoe. I just wanted to, um, let you know that I've got everything outlined in slides so we could go through it first to see if somebody's interested in, in what the strategic plan had initially said, if that's, if that's helpful.
Yeah, let's do that.
Great idea, because then Nick might be here by in time in order to sign up for one of them.
Oh, Carl, also, uh, did we miss your hand?
Um, nope, I was just, I just had it up because I was volunteering for that committee, but I think it makes sense to, um, do what you said and go through the details first.
We're glad you're so eager, though. Do you want me to go through them or how, what's, but what do you?
Uh, I could read them if you like.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so, um, this is John. The objectives for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three strategic plan. The two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee, COBAC, strategic plan has several objectives. Guide the work of COBAC, serve as a tool to receive information, feedback, and support from city staff, and serve as a tool to receive feedback and endorsement from city council, and infuse accessibility in the council's annual goal-setting process. Considerations: COBAC Committee Member Capacity Check. Time consideration, four hours a month roughly for COBAC. Financial considerations, what is COBAC budget? What the COBAC Charter Authority jurisdiction? Current landscape, are there other groups, orgs doing similar work?
So I think the, this is Cassandra, sorry. I think that the important part and the takeaway from this consideration is just essentially before considering which subcommittee you might be interested in joining is to evaluate your own, you know, time considerations, your capacity, and then as a larger group, looking at what potentially financially is feasible for COBAC in addition to what our jurisdiction is and what authority that the, um, the charter, our charter, COBAC's charter gives to the, the committee.
So, item one, improving transportation and infrastructure. COBAC members will partner with the Bend Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO, to provide feedback about how the MPO should use American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds. To improve transportation accessibility, COBAC members will advocate for the use of ARPA funds to incentivize local on-demand transportation providers to include more accessible vehicles in their fleets. Developing a partnership with the MPO will include having members of the MPO present, present COBAC so COBAC members can learn about the MPO's work, including current strategies and goals, and engage in a preliminary conversation with the MPO about the process to allocate available ARPA funds. Additional meetings with the MPO will be scheduled as needed for COBAC to understand, advocate for, and provide feedback on plans to use ARPA funds. These meetings and discussions may culminate in a formal letter to the MPO and city manager outlining COBAC's recommendations. To support an ongoing partnership between COBAC and the MPO, a member of the MPO will be invited to regularly attend COBAC meetings. To support their ARPA fund advocacy, COBAC will invite representatives from local transportation providers to learn more about their efforts to provide accessible ADA-compliant transportation services and accessible connectivity within the city. This information will be used to create specific recommendations that will be, be provided by the MPO. These discussions may also be used to encourage local transportation providers to expand, I can't make out the rest of that.
Expand fleet accessibility beyond any incentives or improvements which might be available if ARPA funding is provided to support the expansion of accessible transportation in Bend.
Possible projects: Learn more about the requirements for accessible on-demand transportation. Work to incentivize local transportation providers to make more accessible vehicles available. Learn more about accessible bus stops, paths of travel, and seating for people with mobility-related disabilities. Advocate for a bridge across the deschutes at Good Dog.
And other projects to be accessible. This could include providing recommendations and feedback.
Learn more about requirements for a post-occupancy accessibility inspection and enforcement for the path of travel and access issues. Partner with Bend Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO, to provide feedback on the use of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds. Advocate for education about bird bike compliance and
Accessibility.
Accessibility.
Okay, that, that's our first subject, so I don't know if you, yeah, wanna.
Um, yeah, I mean, I've been to a couple MPO meetings and Barb, who is our council liaison, also is on the Bend MPO, so are you, are we thinking that having an, an additional person as well as Barb attending both those meetings?
Uh, not so much in attending the meetings, but within COBAC, if there are members identified that really are passionate or wanna tackle one of these issues, um, I think that you could, you could get together outside of regular COBAC hours and start figuring out or determining how to turn the strategic plan into a work plan um, by setting goals for, for how you wanna go ahead and, um, achieve them.
Got it.
Corey, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, um, in, um, uh, assessing capacity, um, I'm assuming I know the answer to this, but if they're, like, I don't really have that much at the moment. Um, but if I did, I would be able to join in with one of these committees at that time, or is it like right now to decide?
I mean, if you have a, an interest and wanna be a part of it, you don't necessarily need to commit the time now because there are others that are gonna be committing time to it. So I would say that it would, if you do have a passion for it, to definitely be on email chain so you can be up to date, so when you do have time, then you can hit the ground running.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm sorry, is this the time when we, um, express our interest?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm interested.
Okay, I think so, Carl. I'm sorry, it's not laid out better. So there, the, of the three subsets of what is in your current, um, uh, COBAC uh, strategic plan, we'll just go through each of them like we did for this first one, and if anyone's interested at the, at the end, we could have conversation, talk about the issues, and then have a list of the potential interests, I think.
Yeah.
And like Corey had mentioned also, if you're just peripherally interested, you could join at this point as well.
So we'll sign up, we'll, we'll hear the details about all three and then sign up at the end?
Well, we could sign up as we talk.
Yeah.
I mean, I know it's, for me, I'm, I'm eager to sign up for all of them, but, you know, like mentioned at the beginning, we have to be cognizant of our bandwidth, you know, like all of us have extra hours to spend like that. Um, I'm definitely interested in improving transportation and infrastructure. So I will sign up for that as well. I take the bus a lot, so.
This is Whitney. I'm also interested in improving transportation and infrastructure. So that is my, my field of work, so it's definitely, um, something near and dear to me.
Awesome.
So just to be clear for note-taking purposes, we've got John, Carl, Whitney, and Corey potentially as a peripherally as, as time allows for you. Perfect.
Great. Okay. Item number two, creating an accessible community. Ensuring, I'm so glad I got LASIK. Ensuring the voices of people experiencing disabilities are represented in local government is among the reasons COBAC was created by the City of Bend. To this end, COBAC plans to identify opportunities to educate and inform the Bend community about the experiences of people with disabilities. Although COBAC will develop specific measurable goals for this priority area at a later date, some preliminary ideas include creating a what-to-do toolkit to help community members identify resources for resolving accessibility and ADA compliance concerns, and creating a resources page on the City of Bend Accessibility Program website, which could also provide what-to-do information along with links to external accessibility resources, as well as City of Bend resources such as COBAC, the Human Rights and Equity Commission, and key city staff. Supporting local business accessibility efforts is also related to community education and is important to supporting cities permitting, building, and general accessibility requirements for local businesses. COBAC members are interested in partnering with the Bend Chamber of Commerce to create and share information with Bend businesses regarding accessibility on topics such as accessible rights of way, parking, and paths of travel, as well as interior accessibility opportunities. COBAC members are interested in meeting with and learning from relevant stakeholders, including but not limited to the Bend Chamber of Commerce.
Representatives from the downtown business district and staff from Visit Bend to learn more about needs and opportunities before establishing specific measurable goals for this priority area.
Possible projects: Proactively letting the community know more about COBAC and the resources available to them. Print business cards with basic information, numbers, to find accessible needs or report ADA parking issues, and barriers, right-of-way sidewalks, bird bikes, snow removal. Leaving cards on windshields, COBAC is here for the community. Set a COBAC table out at events held around the City of Bend. Print a did you know card with information when people are parked illegally, or give it out to the people within the disability community to put on cars.
Be a resource for people to learn more about how they can make infrastructure more accessible. Consider providing education to different stakeholders.
Create a partnership with the Chamber to provide education for businesses about accessibility in the right-of-way, parking, and path of travel, as well as the requirements for accessible setup inside a store, including in restrooms. This could include having an education card to leave as a resource. Have a COBAC booth at events to show who and what COBAC is all about.
Look into collaborations with Bend Park and Recreation and Oregon Adaptive Sports to help expand a more robust, inclusive selection of fitness class offerings.
Be involved in and ensure inclusivity of the outdoor competitions and events in town, including concerts, making sure they are accessible. Network with other Central Oregon disability advocacy groups. Identify opportunities to create more awareness about people experiencing disabilities, including events specifically about the disability community. Have a COBAC booth at events to show
who and what COBAC is all about.
Cool. So of those projects that were listed, um, does anyone have any interest in being part of that subcommittee?
I do.
Sorry, go ahead.
Amanda, okay, anybody else?
Uh, this is Aaron. I'd be interested in, uh, may, like, uh, having a booth or also, uh, interacting with other um, organizations to help people with disabilities or to, you know, form inclusiveness. Not sure which one, which bullet point that was.
Okay.
Um, well, and this is Ashley. I obviously, well, maybe not obviously, but John and I were working on cards, uh, the did you know kind of thing, so. Yeah, I'd be interested in being a part of this. I definitely have questions for some of these bullet points, there's a lot of them. But, yeah.
Cool. Um, I'm interested, but, you know, regarding time, I'm more interested in doing, uh, public events and, in manning tables. I don't really have much um, time to do networking with other Central Oregon disability advocacy groups, or I just, I just, I need to, yeah, manage my time better, but I'm very interested in doing, um, public events with a table where we can do some serious community outreach.
And this is Amanda. I have, like, that would be a good partnership, because I have, like, the opposite.
Yeah.
I'd be better at networking and not as creative.
This is Aaron. I, I think I'd be interested in some of both, um, like John is saying, and probably have some time limitations, but I, I think networking at a table and also that with, networking with other disability groups in town, it's maybe interested to me.
Great.
So for note purposes, we've elected and seen that Amanda, Aaron, Ashley, and John are interested in this particular, um, category of creating an accessible community.
Cool.
Great. Okay, item number three. Creating a culture of accessibility within the City of Bend organization. COBAC will work with the City of Bend to advocate for city to receive about disability, equity, accessibility, and the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA. The development of specific measurable goals for this item will take place after COBAC members learn more about the related trainings employees currently receive from the city or are required to complete based on their profession. This information gathering could take the form of a discussion between COBAC members and city staff from each department. After gathering information about current training, the COBAC membership will consider what, if any, additional training is needed and how to proceed with developing and elevating recommendations to the city manager, including key milestones, metrics of success, and anticipated timeline for the implementation of recommendations. Possible projects: COBAC involvement in the overall budget development around transportation. Have someone involved in the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Ask the city to provide training to engineers, planners, inspectors, and developers about disability equity, ADA, and making things
accessible. This could include having project managers invite COBAC members to site visits or the planning stages of projects.
Great.
Uh, this is Amanda. I'd be interested in that. I feel like this particular category falls in line with the other two, or there's, like, overlap. Um, so, you know, some of these things, well, culture is just kind of an overarching um, thing that will overlap into the other projects too, I feel like, um. So, but I'm happy to be on that one, too.
Carl, then Ashley?
Thanks, um, yeah, I'd, I'd like to be involved, um, at least as time allows. Um, I, I, I think I'd be interested.
Uh, I would as well. I think this is something that I've been pushing for, for a while, um, so I'm more so interested in this than any other kind of subcommittee thing. This is where I would probably give more time I have available.
I mean, I, I already, um, attend the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee meetings, um, and I'm, so I could take that chunk, um, but I don't, I don't see myself tackling anything else on that list.
Are we saying on here which bullet point we wanna be involved in, or are we just saying that, because these are supposed to be subcommittee-type things, or?
I think it's envisioned for you, you can, you have time today to talk about them a little bit more in-depth, or you could just discuss them when you're within the subcommittee about what are the, what are the issues within these possible projects that we really wanna see accomplished? What do we wanna elevate? And then what do we wanna have as something that will be the plan for the rest of the two thousand and twenty-three year?
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I think within this one, um, training for engineers and planners, inspectors, that's the thing that most interests me because it pretty much relates to what I do career-wise. Um, and so I think that's probably the thing that I, I think is most important about COBAC in general, doing for the city, so, yeah, that's where I want the time.
Thanks, Ashley.
Great, so we have Amanda, Carl, Ashley, and myself. If that's it, great.
Do you, um, John, at this point, do you wanna open it up to potentially talking about the points, or do you wanna have that, um, delegated to the subgroups themselves?
I would say that, um, so instead of talking about the points right now with everybody, I would say that we should just leave it to the subgroups because, um, like Ashley said, some things are gonna stand out for different members, and they're gonna be more focused on that, and it'd be a much more, I feel like, uh, worthwhile conversation to have that in a smaller group, in a smaller setting where you're with the people that you're gonna be working with, so. Um, if that's cool. Go.
Oh, I did have this slide available, um, and this is a suggestion, this can be modified for COBAC, it's, it's truly, this is another element that's up to you, so by March, it's a hope that we'll, I'll send out emails with the confirmation of each of these subgroups. And in the, um, time between February and March, if you are able to jump on a call with each other, um, and then you can go through the subpoints and the bullet points of each of the projects and identify one to three, one or two main issues that you'd like to, um, elevate and bring forward, and then when we come back in March, we can discuss like what those are and start kind of putting that work plan in place. And come April, those final work plan items will be identified, we'll create the goals, uh, and then in May, the implementation begins, um, and I'll talk about, uh, our recruitment a little bit too, but you'll have three additional members who'll be able to jump in at some point, is the hope either in April or May.
Great. And we can have a rockin' summer, especially with, if the city gets their trailer for private events, and we can score that, that'd be great. Um, great, so, um, after the meeting today, I guess we will be touching base with the individual subgroups, uh, for people to meet up and talk about what they're interested in, what they wanna focus on, and, um, yeah. Uh, is there any other questions regarding this topic? Oh, okay. All right, uh, COBAC Business. Uh, we have a reminder for Winter Access Award nomination reminders, and also I believe that we wanted to add in, talk about potentially having a break in August instead of December?
Yeah, I have that in my update, but we're welcome to talk about it now, that'd be fine.
Okay. Um, so we took, um, December off as a committee. Um, and unfortunately during that time, there's a lot of stuff going on with the city as far as them trying to get feedback for their strategic planning every once in a while. Um, a lot of budgeting that's going on, and it's not really an opportune time for us to take the month off. Um, so the idea is either to meet every month, or if we wanted to keep a month off, um, I was thinking that August might be a good time because it's when school's starting to kick off again, and it's generally slow, the summer's like almost over, um, and it's, uh, it'll be like, kind of like a lull after the May, June, July, um, kind of festivities over the summer. Um, does anyone have any thoughts about that?
Uh, this is Aaron. I, I think taking August off sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
This is Amanda. I agree with that, too. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Carl?
Yep, I agree, and I also think that we should meet in December.
All right, um, well, uh, do I need to make a motion?
Wait, oh, it's Carl, Carl, oh, he lowered his hand again.
All right, I'm motion to resume having, or moving our month off from December to August, so that way we will meet in December, but not in August for our monthly meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Excellent, motion passes.
Thanks, John.
Cool. All right, um, Carl, do you have a Winter Access Award nomination reminder? I was shoveling my sidewalk this morning, freezing my butt off, and, uh, thought about submitting it myself, myself, but I figured that was a conflict of, uh, conflict of interest, so I didn't, but, anyway.
Yeah, I don't have anything, um, uh, in front of me to read, but, um, yeah, just a reminder that anybody on the committee, um, who notices a local business who's doing a particularly good, particularly good job with snow removal is invited to nominate them for the Winter Access Award by, um, contacting, I guess, um, Lisa and Cassandra, right? Um, and you'll need some documentation in the form of photos, um, showing the business in question sidewalks, and, um, you'll need some contact information for that business. And I can provide some contact info for the person, the business that I nominated, um, a couple of months ago. Um, either I can do that now or offline, whatever makes most sense.
Yeah, if you could email that to us, that would be great. Um, and then just a side note, all nominations are due by April fifteenth, so then they could be voted on at that, at April's meeting.
Great.
Cool. Uh, here's a nitpicky question about that. Does it matter if the business pays for a service to come around and do the sidewalk? Are we trying to, like, highlight businesses that do it themselves, or does it even matter?
I think that they personally, my personal opinion is that if they've hired somebody, they're taking care of, of their business.
Fair enough.
What do you think?
Yeah.
I defer to the committee, whatever.
As long as it gets clean, it's clean.
They're taking, you're being responsible business by taking care of it, if that. Being responsible business by taking care of it. If that means paying somebody else to do it.
Got it.
That question's not come up before, so.
I have a weird brain.
It's not in the.
I think that's a smart question.
Yeah, 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 it is.
Well, like, and also it's like, if someone uses salt, like, should they get a, a knock? Because it's bad for the environment, like, you know, I'm, these are just questions that I, that I have, so.
Added actually to the.
The nomination process is becoming very stringent all of a sudden.
Yeah, I'm gonna go out today and I'm gonna nominate like twenty businesses, I think. Just so we have a good, a good, uh, range.
You'll be snapping pictures all weekend.
Yeah. Cool. All right. Moving on to item number seven, if there's nothing else, uh, about COBAC business. Um, COBAC Roundtable. So, uh, what meetings have people been going to? Um, is there anything that you'd like to see on a forthcoming agenda? Um, information you would like to share with the group?
This is Amanda. I just have one observation that I've just been a bend chamber member and trying to. Be more involved in the chamber events. And also with the recognition that there's. There was a real movement behind the, um, DEI. The diversity, equity, inclusion. There's. Seems to be, um, in my experience. The missing piece of people with disabilities or people with diverse abilities and that whole DEI equation. We're first of all, missing the A, which is access. And. As like chamber events, I'm seeing specifically. Are. Involve, involve, um. DEI discussions, um, and, um, presenters talking about DEI. The. Yeah, there's a, the big portion of our demographic. These, you know, individuals with, um, diverse abilities are. Not being discussed. So we're talking about ethnicity, race, gender, sexuality, all like all different kinds of, of, of diversity. And we're not talking about. The largest demographic of people on our planet who, and that's those who experience diverse abilities. So, um, just an observation in general. I don't know if anybody else has witnessed that in other things, but I definitely witnessed that in, with the Ben Chamber and have brought it up. So.
Um, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Amanda, thank you for sharing that. I think that highlights a really important aspect of the A being left off of DEIA. And not just that equity is inclusive of accessibility, but that accessibility is appreciated and included within DEIA. I think looking at the three. Committees, right? This would, that would might be a great opportunity for COBAC to partner potentially with the chamber. To, to bring accessibility to the forefront, and that's something that could be identified in that subgroup because it is such an issue and it is something I have seen as well. I appreciate that. Yeah.
Yeah, I actually just joined the chamber a couple of weeks ago and I know that they had that talk in Tethro about diversity. So I think for the subgroup, it might be, uh, behoove them to maybe pitch the Chamber of Commerce on doing our own talk.
Which, again, this is Amanda and I have been in contact with Cyrus Mooney, who, who. Is in charge of, um, the Ben Chamber events and, um. Intend to follow up with him on. On that. So.
Great.
Yeah, I'll be a little horned.
That's excellent.
Yeah.
I wonder how much it is to rent out open space studios too, because I know that's a great place to have venues.
We should look into that.
Yeah.
I think, um. You know, coming from the world of equity and inclusion, especially around disability, um, yeah, I see this constantly. Uh, and for me, I think the biggest thing is that, um. We, we kind of in the conversation create a separation between other marginalized communities and the disabled community. And the fact, and we're not having conversations about intersectionality because all of those identities also. Can have a disability, do have disabilities, um, and so it's, it's strange that it's left out. And I have a little bit of a weird feeling about adding the A. Um, but you know, it's just something internally I'm still working through, but it does make sense in the fact that, you know. Equity within disability is different than access within disability, um, the physical versus the social. I think they're both very important, um, but wanting to make sure that the social aspects of it aren't left out. And we're not kind of perpetuating things that like ADA is, you know, the, the thing that we focus on. Um, making sure that intersectionality and the conversation is, is much broader. Uh, and so, yeah, that's my perspective.
Thank you, Ashley. You know what? I so appreciate that because that was one of the first things and one of the things that. When I came on to COBAC was, um. A, a large aspect of wanting to be on COBAC was the, that piece, that social and emotional, um. Aspect of access. That is often missing with that. With the A in, in access. So, yeah, definitely don't want to miss. That other piece and, 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 uh, want to also. Because I think what can happen, like what you're talking about, Ashley, I'm sure you've. I know that you, you. Witness this all the time and are part of it just in, in, uh, your lived experience and in your career. But businesses in particular. Often will focus on that ADA aspect and not on like the other aspects of. Access, um, to. Their, what they're offering, what their services are. So. Yeah.
Cory then Carl.
Um, yeah, I wanted to just echo that, um, Ashley. I've, uh, similarly feel the same way. I mean, uh, DEI stuff's like a huge part of my actual job. And also I really, it's a, you know, personal in here, uh, type of thing. So, you know, I definitely agree and thinking about, uh, intersectionality and. Um, scarcity, like, um, focusing, you know, folks focusing on, um, like racial equity and things like that doesn't necessarily take anything away from, from us. Um, because, you know, there are tons of, uh, disabled people of all, um, walks of life. And, uh, it's, um. Important to consider that and that it's, um, and I, equity itself, like the term does technically, you know, include. Everybody, right? It's like equity for, for everyone. It's not necessarily exclusive. Um, so I think it's good to remember that and have that mindset that it's, um, it's both and it's everything and, um, rather than it being, you know. Energy here and not there. It's like all, um, intertwined. And so I also have like mixed feelings about the A, but it is, um. Also, it, terms evolve all the time. So it's adding. You know, having, just putting accessibility in, in folks' mind is, um, important too. But, yeah, just wanted to echo that. I, I, I feel that too.
Uh, um, this is Carl. I don't feel strongly one way or the other about the inclusion of the A for accessibility. But I just wanted to point out that. Accessibility really is about inclusion in, in the way that I understand it at least. Um, and so. Um, I think that even if we don't ha- add that word, um. If we want all people to be included, um, we have to make things accessible.
Yeah, that's the thing. In my opinion is like, we shouldn't have to say it. Like, it should be a no brainer. Wait.
He's such a wonderful world if that were the case.
Great. Is there anything else people would like to mention during the COBAC Roundtable?
Oh, Ashley here. I guess I would like to mention and, uh, thank those of you who showed up to the Ben Park and Rec. Uh, open house for the water, uh, access project that they're doing. Um, there wasn't a ton of people that showed up for the in-person. Uh, it was mostly kind of an older demographic. Um, and it, it was really interesting to hear some of their perspectives and the concepts that they. They liked best, um, if, if y'all have seen it, but the, uh, concept at Miller's Landing. There's the one and two, and a lot of people gravitated towards concept one. The dock system for the, the ramp or for the boat launch. Um, and I think it was because that's all that they're familiar with. Uh, they were kind of thrown off by a different design that it hasn't been used before or really seen. Um, and so I had a lot of conversations with people of like, well, actually this is what I would prefer as a wheelchair user. Um, you know, and explaining why the dock isn't great for someone with a mobility need. Um, and so it, it just highlighted to me how important it is for us to show up at some of those things. Um, and to be having conversations and kind of asserting our opinions and our needs and like, you know, advocating. For those things because people really don't know, you know, they just know what they've seen and they're like, oh, that's, that's accessible. Um, and so they'll kind of just take whatever people feed them, um, as an authoritative thing. So, uh, yeah, thanks for. For showing up. And if you did the, the survey, it's great. I think they got like over five hundred people that, uh, responded to it. Uh, so that's great. Um, but yeah, if anyone has questions about it, feel free to ask.
Uh, could I ask a question about that? I just was curious if there's a. Design that's. More favorable to. Somebody in wheelchairs or is there one clear? Clear, um, proposal that's more accessible than the others?
Um, well, I think, you know, in my opinion, uh, my preference would have been the concept two. Uh, that would be more accessible because it is a, you know, solid structure and there's more space and all sorts of things. And, uh, that was really just kind of like a rough draft. That was our initial. Uh, design of things. And then, um, from this point, now that we've gotten community feedback, we'll. We'll go back, we'll decide whether or not we want to continue the design process on concept one or concept two. Um, so we'll see, but yeah, it's, it's very much still in flux.
Cool. Thank you.
Uh, this is John. Um, yeah, when I showed up to that, um. To that, uh, survey. I also had like no idea what dock system would be best. And that's why I went up to Ashley and was like, what would you prefer? Because like. I mean, I would, I would imagine that part of your problem is having to educate people on new systems that they're unfamiliar with. And so it's almost like during the survey, you'd be like, oh, hey, watch this five minute YouTube video on a ramp system and then come back and finish the survey, you know, like. That's, I can't imagine having to do that.
That's the hard part about, uh, like, you know, public input and everything is that it's. You can only explain so much without there being a presentation or, you know, people talking about it. People are coming in with their perceptions and a lot of people don't have experience with disability. And so they're just making assumptions. And so it's kind of a flawed system unless there is like full explanation. But luckily it's, it's feedback. It's not a vote. So.
Excellent. That's good to hear. Okay, um, if there's nothing further. We can move on to agenda item number eight, the accessibility and equity manager update.
Or do, do we want to do, we did roundtable. Okay. Yes, um, hello, this is Cassandra. Um, we, um, have some exciting updates, one of which we've already discussed a little bit, but the COBAC recruitment. Is live right now. So if you go onto the city of Ben's website. Uh, I think I linked this in the email that was sent to all members ahead of this meeting. Um, you will see that the recruitment is active and we are accepting applications until March fifteenth. Which is very exciting. So as much as you can share this with your communities, your friends, family, anyone who may be interested professionally. Um, if they work in the field, we're just really looking to supplement all of you excellent, amazing, uh, co- committee members with three additional members. So that you really can maximize your capacity and have as many people on the, on the committee as possible. So we're really looking forward to that. Does anybody have any questions regarding the recruitment or the timeline? Um, after, after the recruitment period closes on the fifteenth. We'll, um, assess whether or not there are enough applicants to be able to move forward. And if they're not, we'll have an extension and open that up for a little bit longer. Until another deadline and then we'll begin interview process after that. So hopefully if we're looking optimistically, April, potentially we could be welcoming new members. Um, it is probably more likely that that would happen in May. Um, any questions regarding recruitment, thoughts, feedback, um, I, I, I would love to hear from, from committee members.
Um, this is John. I just have a question. Um, are we printing out flyers advertising the, the, the positions that are available? Cause I think like putting them at like Larkspur Community Center or OSU Cascades, um. You know, really trying to get the word out that the, these committee positions are open to. Uh, a greater amount of people would be a good idea. And I'm down to drop them off at whatever. Whatever spot you guys think get the most eyes.
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting consideration and maybe looking at targeted advertising. Um, I think that the city is, is moving away from printed items, but I do think that that's a really an excellent way to be able to reach people. Um, even if it was on an access board or something like that. So let's definitely work on that. Thank you for that. If anybody else has any, um, ideas of places to put flyers, any kind of activity or directed, we could actually even email people. Please let me know and I'm happy to, to send those out and conduct that outreach on behalf of COBAC. Um, the second item is the parking working group update. So we have yet to meet, um, but we are going to have that subgroup. We are allowed to, um, have the members meet, but they cannot provide any kind of formal recommendation to the whole of COBAC. And we have, uh, Nicholas, John and Whitney, I believe, who are the three members who have expressed interest in this. So this is a to be continued to put a pin in it and come back to it at a later point. Um, we do also have city staff that had, have offered to have, uh, specific private meetings with, um, the working group. Uh, to discuss CPEC, any kind of applicable upcoming ADA considerations for parking and general, um. Accessibility issues when it comes to right of way and other issues that the city is coming into, uh, contact with. So that's that update. Um, we, uh, John had already discussed during, uh, an earlier point about plans for the end of the year meeting. So we'll move forward with that motion and keeping the October, November, December in place and, uh, not meeting for the August. That does bring up, um. The idea in December, I think it's really exciting that everyone's going to be meeting because it is a really active time for city council. Uh, but also I think it would be a great opportunity, uh, to dedicate. And this is something that you all can set in your agenda when it comes December, which will be here inevitably before we know it. But, uh, a year in review to see what particular, um, committee members have dedicated their time to, what we've achieved as a whole. And anything that we want to look forward to in 2024. So that's just something that we can put in our parking lot or bike rack, um, whatever the reference is of something that we can look to, uh, come December. And these would be the dates, um, uh, proposed for October, November and December. Um, we can discuss these a little bit more in, in detail as it comes closer. But as we're, um, you know, planning holidays and everything that comes in the later part of the years. These are just some preliminary dates that we have available, uh, that Lisa has identified where the city council chambers are available to us. Um, and this has already been, uh, addressed in that August meeting has the, the motion to remove August, uh, as the summer break has been approved. Um, we are also looking to create some kind of a, a mixer, whether that be a lunch at a restaurant or an evening. Uh, or some sort of a picnic, pic- picnic, picnic, excuse me. I don't know what a picnic is, but. Uh, to have some time to get together as a committee. Um, I know that in, in light of COVID, that has been difficult. And so if we want to identify times where we're outside or potentially when the weather gets warmer, um, we can do that. So that's kind of something to keep on the back burner and look forward to is a time for us outside of the committee where we don't discuss anything to do with COBAC. But we do have time to, uh, meet with one another and, uh, build our capacity, uh, and, uh, that'll be great. And with that, I believe those are all of my updates. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has as well. Okay.
Okay, John, agenda item number nine, COBAC Councilmember Liaison. Liaison update, um, Barb Campbell, councillor Barb Campbell.
Liaison, there I am. Hello, everybody. Thank you so much. Um, I think Cassandra did a really good job, honestly, updating. City council and the city, um, its, its goals, um. Sorry, that's Faraday. Um. We, we have not seen, um, yet in, you know, in writing. Our goals for the biennium. And we're all interested in getting that document. This, this year's goal. This, this year's goal setting, um, it, it really was a little unusual, I thought, from past years. In past years, we've spent three entire days really hammering out details. And at the end of those three days, we really did have a rough draft of goals. And this time, um, it was a day and it was much less time. It was a day and a half. And, um, and we really didn't spend time on specifics. Um, and by that I mean specifics that have to do really more with budget and capacity. And that makes a lot of sense because council, we really don't know how many staff we can afford to hire, for example. So in the past, we might've gone back and forth. We want this many more staff people in this department. We just can't afford them. Um, and so, again, you know, in March, we're getting that rough draft and I am very interested to see what our goals this time look like in writing. And I am excited about that. Um, this City Council absolutely is focused on multimodal transportation, um, transportation for folks who don't use a car themselves. And so I'm really excited about that. I think we're gonna have, have a good set of goals to work on. Um, MPO, our MPO meeting this month is, actually starts in an hour. It's in an unusual time this month. And if anybody would like to, you know, zoom into that meeting, it's hybrid. It might be interesting, um, seeing your, um, work plan there and the idea of vehicle for on-demand transportation providers. I will tell you, um, makes me a little, um, I, I guess anxious is the word. Just, I don't, I just don't know if there's anything we can do about that. Um, I assume we're talking about, really, we're talking about Uber and Lyft. And we just don't have any control over them. CET does do on-demand transportation. We all know that. That's where Dial-A-Ride comes through. And my impression of CET right now is just that, that budget is not the, the holdup with CET expansion. It's drivers. So I absolutely, you know, I am open-minded and I, and I really do am interested in what this committee thinks is, would be helpful, transformational for accessibility in our city. Um, so those conversations are ongoing. We have two new members of the MPO. Um, Mike Riley and Anthony Broadman are going to be on MPO with me. And their first meeting is going to be today. So again, if anybody would like to zoom in, if anybody is interested, I do think this might be a good meeting to zoom into because we have those two new members and we'll be discussing all of these things is, and most in particular that ARPA funding. It's, it's time to get that money out the door, frankly. Um, we, we need to ma- get those decisions made and start making people's lives better with the money. Um, what about questions? Has anybody got any questions for me?
Um, Barb, is the MPO meeting still at the Deschutes, uh, Commissioners Building or the County?
It's not. Thank you for asking. It's at a different location also. It's at, um, it's ODOT's offices. It's right there with DMV. Okay, so instead of going, you know how the parking lot for DMV is behind? You're, you kind of like travel through that parking lot and then you're in a different parking lot for their offices. Once you've gotten to there, I, I don't think you can miss the conference room. So thank you for, thank you, John. I forgot to mention that. It's a different location also. Carl?
Yeah, um, not a question, but, uh, Barb, I would love to talk to you more about the on-demand transportation thing, um, because I have, um, done some thinking about that and I do think there's a role for the city and maybe for the MPO. So I don't think I can make it to the meeting today, but if I can talk to you, um, offline sometime about that, that'd be great.
I, I would be happy to, Carl. Um, I was on City Council when we first made the code changes that allow Uber and Lyft to operate in our city. And at that time, these, you know, all of these considerations came up. And so yes, Carl, I, you know, I've been interested all along and, and yes, I would be more than happy to talk to you more about that.
Great.
This is Amanda. What's the, is, can we get the Zoom link for the MPO meeting?
Yes, I will send that to Lisa right now and then she will forward it to the whole group. How about that?
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you, Barb.
Of course. Thank you all. I think that's it, unless there are any other questions. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Barb.
Okay. Well, we got done quick today, um, even with the late start. Um, uh, I motioned, if there is no other further business? No? Okay. So there's no further business. The meeting is adjourned. Uh, well, I motioned to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that motion. This is Amanda.
All in favor?
Hi.
Excellent. Thank you so much. The meeting is adjourned at two PM.
Thank you.
Bye.
Hey, Ron, thanks.
Wunderbar.
Lisa, thank you for bringing snacks.
Yeah, no problem.